Ladies and gentlemen, we call this meeting up back to order. Welcoming everyone here for our June 18th, 2025 special meeting. Thank everyone for coming that's in the virtual world also. First order on our agenda today is county administrator items, and I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Tedlock.
Yes, sir. The board from yesterday's discussion asked to get some additional numbers related to a 1.25% increase. And the 104, 652 additional monies needed for the county did not include the social services numbers. So reached out to Ms. Clayton on that, and they would be approximately $1,734 in local dollars. That does not include the state monies that they would receive for doing that. But the local dollars needed would be an additional $1,734. So that their total increase would be 12,930.
Any questions on it, gentlemen? So in order for them to have a raise, we got to come up with additional with $1,700.
Uh, look up local monies. I mean, the 12,930 would go in the budget, but you'd also realize some revenue on the, uh, from the state on the revenue side. Yeah. So it would offset that by the 11,196.
Gentlemen, you have any questions? Have any comments?
What, what that? How much money would be pulled out of the?
If, if you
That we don't want to
If you looked at doing the school, county and social services, you would be dipping into the undesignated fund balance about 429,390.
What was that figure again?
429,390.
That's without anything cut from the school budget?
That's with their potential cuts, but the 1.25% increase.
429,000.
390, approximately.
That should give a one and a quarter or one and a half.
One and a quarter.
Can we deal with this without dealing with the school first?
What was that?
Can we deal with this now before we deal with the school?
Good.
That's what I'm thinking.
You think this?
Yes, what we do, we want to be fair, but do the same thing on both sides. This money coming out of the reserve fund?
If you did the 1.25%, it would, unless you made some additional cuts in other areas to that, that amount.
All right. It would deplete our reserve fund down to how much?
Well, you look at this little chart. His guesstimate was $3 million. I don't believe that 1.3 million that's overspent from the school system has come off of this yet.
Hadn't come off that.
Okay. So put another $430,000 on top of that, that's pretty much going to give you what you're going to have back. You're going to be right out of a million dollars, so it's over a million dollars.
Thank you, Jim.
And we have some additional funds too, that we're going to have coming from the school side too. Size of 1.3. Well, gentlemen, appreciate you had some comments of what you wanted to make. That was time.
This money, this money coming from the state to social services, do we have other monies coming from the state to like the sheriff's department or the school? Or, or sanitation or emergency services?
Well, we had the SOQ money that came from the governor that we, that we voted to approve to give to the teachers that were SOQ qualified. But that did not require one cent of county money.
But how about to the sheriff's department? Do we have money from the state coming into the sheriff's department that we have to add money to, like with the social services? In order to receive it?
Thank you for talking about the, um, the positions that they found.
So you're talking about the comp board positions. So they, they provided a, for the state, they, they provided the 1.5% bonus. With the 1.5% bonus, you have to, uh, give that bonus in order to receive those monies back. In order for the county to do a bonus, we have to do an ordinance, which requires the advertisement of that two weeks, hold the public hearing, and then provide that, that bonus. Now, that is, those monies are specific to each comp board employee. So you cannot take those monies and distribute that, say, across the entire department. The, the 3%, as long as the, it's my understanding, and we can confirm this. It's my understanding that as long as the county position, the comp board position, if the county is paying above and beyond the comp board position, the 3% is not required to be given. But you should be able to get that, that money. But that 3% is on the comp board salary.
On the comp board.
It's not on the county salary.
But that's not the case with social services?
I'm not as familiar with social services. Actually, Ms. Clayton is here, so I don't know.
Ms. Clayton, would you mind coming up, please? How you doing today?
I'm good, thanks.
Would you explain this email that you sent?
The one where Luttrell wanted the breakdown?
Yes, ma'am.
Certainly. Glad I brought it. So the state gave the agency $29,830. That was for a 3% raise, but the county would have to pay $4,624 of that. So there is a local match of $4,600. We recalculated this morning, and then I wouldn't have to send any of that money back. So then the rest of the graph, we were talking about different amounts, so I threw them all on there, 1.5%. I would use 14,915 of state money. I would need 2,300 in local, 2,312, and I'd have to send back that other 14,000. So as we decrease, I have to send that money back.
All right, any other, board members having any questions for Ms. Clayton?
So 1.25, you need how much?
1.25, I would need $1,734, $1,734. The state money would pay the 11, the other 11,000, and I'd send back the 18,000.
Question for you. If you, if you were to send it all back, does that affect you in the future, if anything?
It will reduce my base budget. So this year, when they gave us that for me to raise the raises to, it was, my base budget was raised because they had to cover it. So each year it would be in there. So if they take it out, I'm just going to start with a lower amount next year.
Okay. All right.
But that number is not in your base budget currently, is that correct?
It is in my base budget.
It is.
They've already given it to us. Yes. They've given us, I'm already sending back at the bottom there, you see, I'm already sending back the 11,000. That's already in there too. That was for the bonus, because that requires a local match for DSS as well.
And the reason you're concerned about the base budget is because that will affect how much money you would receive the following year?
Yeah, I like to keep the base budget as high as possible.
1.25, she didn't get any state money.
So if, if you didn't receive any state money, the question was, um, if you did not receive any state monies, you would need the, in order to provide a 1.25, you would need the 11,196 plus the 1,734.
Correct.
So she would need a total of 12,930 if you didn't have any state funds.
And with it, she needs 17.
She would need the, with the state funds, she just needs the $1,734 of local funds.
So we're getting a tremendous savings by getting those state funds to the county.
Yes, the county has a 15.5% match.
Yeah. Tremendous savings.
Hi, gentlemen. Any more questions? Ms. Clayton, thank you very much.
Thank you.
$10,000 savings, a little more than $10,000 savings by getting that state money. At 1.25.
Yeah, we just need to come up with 1734.
That's one way to look at it. The contrary to that is, it would be a cost to the county of $1,734. And if you do that, I think you're absolutely committing to giving everyone a raise in the county and in the school.
We have to be fair.
Have to be fair.
I'm not saying it's a great thing to do or not at this point, but I think that's what you're committing yourself to do if you decide to do that.
Well, you certainly said it, Trip. That's, I mean, Chip, that's, uh, that's certainly what's going to happen. You give one, you give all.
I don't want anybody in the community to think that anybody on this board is not in favor of giving raises to employees to help the situation that they're in.
Well, there was one email that I got today that we were not in favor of giving any raises, and that is not so.
People have to realize that the money comes from somewhere, and there has to be a way to put that money back.
Yep, and it has to be money in that bucket in order to dip it out.
We're doing a lot of dipping here lately.
Yep, just like a bucket of water, you keep dipping into it, sooner or later it runs out. Well, we've found ways in the past to help the situation, so we had to do it again. I still said that, um, we have some good employers, have some good employers. And, um, I'm not saying we had to follow every county, but we want to stay on level funding with the, to make sure that we keep the good people that we have and not keep losing them every year, you know? Well, gentlemen, I think we're all kind of between a rock and a hard place. I would like, I would like to see everybody get a 1.25%. If we can work it out. That is the way I look at it. We all got to come together and we all got to find the money.
Right.
And that reserve fund will be dipped down to almost nothing. We have an emergency come in, and what are we going to do then? We know we got to borrow money right now just to make it through the rest of the year. Y'all kind of thumb it on, toss it over in your mind, see what y'all want to do. Your 429,390, did that include the 1734 too?
That, that did, I guess.
You're in good shape there. On that.
One other comment that I'd like to make. We're talking about going back to some of these other departments that we've already gone to one time, but that's fine. However, we could be cutting them so deep and forcing them to look for more cuts that they're coming back to us all next year, every month, looking for appropriations, couple of things that were in the budget. The school is probably the most likely target for those, for those cuts because of the amount of money involved in their budget. But I'd hate to see us cut them so badly that they are having to come back to us frequently asking for more, for more money. Because if that is the case, and that's what they indeed do, then what have we done?
Mr. Williams, I'm glad you brought that up. Because I've had, and I know you've had quite a few conversations with Dr. Leslie too. And I know she has indicated that whatever we give her, she'll try to make it work. But she did not say that she would not be back for a supplemental appropriation.
Right.
And you may cut it now and give it six months later. Still the same amount of money. And I do trust what she tells me.
But you're creating a problem six months down the road.
I know.
Where's the money going to come?
Where's the money going to come from?
You look back at your Davenport report, this thing's almost this is, and you have to put some material in. Recommendation, single most important measure that the county can undertake is to adopt a structurally balanced budget, further use of the fund balance, balance the budget convinced, um, so the county.
And stop spending, and stop spending as much as possible.
Yep. I want everybody to get a raise. I've worked for two different counties. And the reality is, just because you work for a county, doesn't mean you get a raise every year. I've worked for Chesterfield County. We went three or four years in a row and then we got a raise.
I worked in Northumberland many years. We didn't get a raise.
And
Just the way it was.
The concept, you know, everyone thinks that they're going to get a pay increase every year. That's, that's not so. It doesn't work like that. You know, we got Mr. Balderson back there, worked for the city of Fredericksburg. I guarantee you, they didn't get a raise every year. Got another gentleman, I think he worked up in Northern Virginia. Quite a man, all up in that area somewhere else. Don't know him that well, but I guarantee you, he didn't get a raise every year. Twice, 34 years. Yep, but it wasn't, you know.
I can understand that, but that doesn't have anything to do with this year. And then look, look, that's your point. This is mine. I still say when people work a whole year and surrounding counties find a way to do it, we can too. These people deserve a way as simple as you would if you were in this position. So we have to stop making excuses and find a way to do it. Everybody might have a different opinion, but you got to look out for your people too. As simple as that.
Whether or not those employees deserve the raise is not what we're, I don't think what's causing the trouble in my head. I think they do deserve a raise. It's whether or not we can afford to give it to
But we have to find a way.
The surrounding counties that you were talking about referring to. I'm almost certain they were not in the financial crisis that we are in right now.
Yeah, we've been in it before, and we found a way to get out of it too.
I haven't been here as long, as long, I'll take your word for it.
Yeah, that's right. Right. And, uh, that's how I feel.
But we have been through years before where we didn't get a raise.
Well, I'm just going to put this out there. I will not vote to go into the contingency fund at all. We have been warned. Instead of
On no uncertain terms.
I want the employees, the staff to get a pay increase.
Yes, yes.
But when we have a firm standing before us and say, hey, here's your red flag, this is your warning, you're breaking the county. You know, I won't vote to use any of those folks.
We're all standing here, sitting here talking, and we're saying a lot of things, but one word we're not saying. Everybody's keeping quiet about it. Nobody's saying a word about taxes. Nobody.
You're right.
You shy away from it. Mr. Long is talking about, we got to find a way. Mr. Long never mentioned the word taxes.
Yes, I did. I, I, I have mentioned it before.
I'm talking right here today.
Okay, well, we should, we, I told you, we, several years ago, we had, I told Mr., uh, had like the check on it. Several years ago, I remember when Mr. Burton was, he found, we had an emergency tax day. Emergency tax day, and it worked. Northumberland County has had an emergency tax day.
That's a tax.
To raise money.
We already got eight cent going on now.
And that doesn't have anything to do with having an emergency tax day. And the people, people, a lot of the citizens, people went along with it. So there's always ways, if you stop looking for excuses and look for ways to do what we have to do.
Tedlock, anything in the records for the emergency tax?
I, I'm not sure about an emergency tax. The only thing that I can think of would be the revenue anticipation of what they refer to as the RAN.
I was saying, I know.
That we can, that we can borrow monies. Which we have not had to borrow monies yet, but we're keeping a close eye on that with the treasurer's office. And I have prepared the revenue anticipation note that the board approved was for fiscal year '25. So I have another one prepared for the board, once we adopt the fiscal year '26 budget, to also adopt another revenue anticipation note. But I mean, I, I don't mind looking into it a little bit further, but I'm, I'm not aware of
I think you need to, you need to look into it. I remember, I don't know what it was called, but I remember us having a day where we needed money. So to raise 430,000, that's, is that about, uh, almost three cent?
Yeah.
Much too.
Two cents.
Two cents. Now, keep in mind that some of these departments, in the process of reviewing their budgets, also reduce their overtime based off of a 0% increase. So they reduced it because they, we were not looking at the 3% increase. So that's, that's just another cost or factor, just to be thinking about that.
The 429 is really not an accurate figure yet.
And overtime, you, you can't, that's
Yeah, you don't know how much overtime you're going to have. So one cent on the levy is what, 288,000?
Two, about 288.
288. Are you looking at three cent right there? Three cent, that would have been 11 cent on the levy and not a field to it.
I'm like Mr. Brand at this point. I will not be able to vote in favor of anything that further depletes that contingency fund. We've got two choices to make. We can either further the situation that we're in, in a negative manner, or we could do something to improve it. And the vote that I will make will be one that will benefit the county at this point. And if people say, well, you're looking at the county, not the employees, well, that's not true either, because the county is who provides the jobs for the employees.
You're 100% right. Let's see, what'd you have here, Mr. Tedlock? Your proposed budget would have $49,130,000 in 222. That was, that was zero raises, zero increase in salaries.
That is, that includes 0% on the county side. I believe that, um, may have included the increases that the school division was asking for, that 49, 132, 222. But it did not, that was 0% on the county side. Now, the, the projections that, um, that I've provided in the past, uh, yesterday, was 0% across the board. We're looking at a positive of 203,281.
All right.
But there again, any, and keep in mind, this is all estimates, but keep in mind is that any supplemental appropriations would start dipping into that. And then you also have the finance staff consideration.
So above everything else.
That's not included in the budget as of right now. That's not included in the budget as of right now.
Gentlemen, I'm not satisfied with increasing the tax rate by eight cent either, but we don't have a choice on that.
I look at my tax papers and I wanna cry sometimes. But facing reality is a point we all have to make. You don't get blood out of a tournup. I hope there's some way we can do it without a tax increase, but I've listened to what Mr. Long had to say. And I'm thinking, okay, he's making these statements. Now how do we go about implementing what he's saying? I don't get anything, any reason or any means of implementing what he's saying. How do we do this?
Yep, that's true.
And I will have to agree with Mr. Williams and Mr. Brian. I don't want to dip into that fund anymore. That fund is needed. It's our sovereignty. A catastrophic problem with the sewer system. It could be wiped out just like that.
We had one of them last year, the hole in that line going across Cockle Creek. Would have wiped every bit of that out and then some.
When I hear problems, I like to hear remedies.
Tadlock, how much money do we not receive from land use?
I would have to get that number for you.
Could you get that number?
What was that, Richard?
How much money do, do we not receive from land use? A lot of acres are here that are in land use, and it's, you pay almost nothing on it. Well? What does the board want to do? I know we don't want to dip into the reserve fund. Or contingency fund, whatever you wanna call that fund. There's no way we can dip into it.
Well, you got two choices. You're gonna give any kind of pay increase, you're gonna have to find the money. You know, the source we got to find the money is gonna be in the school system. Uh, it's the largest budget we have in the county. Like Mr. Williams said, are you gonna strip that budget? And are they gonna be coming back and asking for more funds that we may not have to give them then? Or do you pass a budget without any pay increases this year? Get the county finances and school finances back on board and start over. Hope we can do better next year.
I'd like to give him a raise and tell him to stop spending. As simple as that. I mean, something you got to have is no question. I'm saying that loud and clear.
And to Mr. Long's argument, I agree with him. I, I would love to have, for a raise. And I'd love to find the money. You know, you don't get a one percent. Okay, you, you less than the amount, the, the amount of money that you're gonna need, you still gotta go to the contingency fund to, to get it.
Yeah.
We still have a lot of unknowns out here on what, where this little bit of money we got left over. We know one point three million dollars is going out of it.
To the school.
And, and nothing against the, the folks that are here today.
No, absolutely not.
They may have something else that pop up that they don't know about.
Yeah.
That's five hundred thousand dollars. So.
I thank the Lord we've got those people sitting over here today.
So, you know, I might agree we're gonna have to make decisions that we're not gonna agree with.
And it might not be very popular with the general public.
I've, I've said it all along, and I say it again, the, this issue of overspending hurt a lot of people. This is another example of how big an impact it's got, it's had on this county.
Did you get that number?
I'm gonna have to get with the
Okay.
The commissioner of revenue.
No idea.
I'll, I'll get it for you.
Is that something that gone, that got home?
They got home.
Nope, nobody has any indication of what that amount is.
What amount?
Farm use, land use.
You. That's not gonna do you any good this year.
No.
Oh. And I'm gonna tell you one thing right now, that's gonna open up a, a huge can of worms when you bring that up, gonna have a death scare.
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's gonna have an impact on every farmer in this county.
And that's not as big as it used to be, because it used to be a whole lot of farmers with a little bit of land. Now it's just a few farmers with a great big bunch of land.
Right.
Just nothing else that would be cut. At least I don't see it. I know we've been over and over through this budget, over and over, making cuts. And I just don't know if we can find any.
It's just like Chip said, I agree a hundred percent. Cut, 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 first thing you know, they're gonna be coming back saying, wait a minute now, we, we need this, we need that, we need, we didn't buy this, we didn't buy that, because we didn't have the money, and now this is war, now we need something else.
And they're gonna point fingers at us and say, we need that because you didn't give it to us when we asked for it.
Yeah. Do you need any more time to look for any more cuts? Or you've satisfied with what you've done and what you've looked at?
I mean, we've got the, a large increase in waste management, but not knowing what that rate is gonna be, uh, I may be one of the ones coming back to the board and saying, I need a supplemental appropriation for waste management. Uh, I mean, that's an option, um, but, uh, we've got the thirty-five additional thousand dollars in the audit. But based off of the amount that we had in audit fees with the two firms, that was just kind of a guesstimate that what we had from, from last year, not knowing what this upcoming year is gonna cost us.
But we gotta watch, and getting back to trimming these budgets down, you gotta watch your, your year-end money, your one-time money. Your year-end money can fund a project that can be paid for. It doesn't have a continuous cost. Your year-end money can also go back in and help build up your potential. But if you have nothing, nothing left over, you will end up with nothing going back into your fund, nothing to do with one-time project.
That's right.
And the, the worst thing I see with the county budget is we don't know what waste man, that, that could be thirty thousand, it could be three hundred thousand.
That's true. We have no idea what they're gonna charge us.
I mean, we know that number's capped, but we don't know what, what amount in between that's gonna be.
What was it last year? More or less?
The, the total?
Yeah.
And what is the cap?
Uh, oh, well, it's a eight percent cap each year, but, um, and that, that specific line item includes other things other than just waste management too. That includes the debris site, um, and the recycling too, so.
So what would it eight cent be based on what we pay them for? Just a estimate.
Uh, do you know now? Actually, what I, I did, as far as the budget goes, I did a five percent on the, the amount that we had budgeted.
Okay.
You did a five percent over what was included in last year's budget, or this current year's budget?
Correct.
Just give us that number, what is that?
So that was that's this fiscal year.
That's this fiscal.
So as of today, we've spent one million, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight ninety-seven. We budgeted one point eight. We've done some transfers into that, uh, this year.
I think we just, uh, get budgeted, going to the budgeting.
So for fiscal year twenty-five, we budgeted one point eight, so we've not transferred anything yet. Um, we've spent one point seven million dollars roughly. Um, and then I budgeted for the fiscal year twenty-six, ninety thousand dollars. Increase.
I'm not in that.
I don't understand it, maybe I should, but why don't we know how much we need to budget for waste management at this point?
Well, it, it's based off of the tonnage, so it depends on how many pulls they have, how many tons they've pulled with, within that pool.
Sort of based off of tonnage, or there's a rate that they charge us, and then tonnage adds to that?
Both. So there's a fee to pull it, and then there's a fee for the tonnage in, in the amount of that pool. So i- if you have an open top, you don't get as great of, a rate, because you don't get as much in the open top as far as tonnage.
One reason we won't get them stickers to try to cut that down a little bit is the tonnage.
That's stopped people from outside of the county.
Yep.
Which is more prevalent in the Ditchley area than it is in
Yeah.
Corset.
Mm-hmm.
One side of the road's light, and the other side's Northumberland.
With the tonnage, you, you get a light load every once in a while. Costs the same amount to pull a light load as it does to pull a pull five tons versus eight tons, it costs the same.
Right.
So we, we wanna try to get the most we can into those, uh, those compacters and those open-top boxes as we can, so. But sometimes items that are put in the open-top boxes are, are bulky. With all this wasted space in, and you got a big holler setting in there, but nothing into it, that's, that's a light load. Still costs the same pulling. But that does add up to be more loads in, or, or, or more pulls.
Happy days.
Well? You wanna give, uh, Mr. Tadlock the guidance, just proceed as he's so laid it out?
We got no choice. Don't like it, but we don't have no choice.
What kind of direction do you need from us, Mr. Tadlock?
All I'm looking for is, if you need me to finalize the numbers, I have to prepare the resolutions, um. We have to adopt it, and then we have to approve the tax rate. Um, then we have to do the appropriation resolution, um, PPTR resolution. So there are quite a few that I need to get prepared for the board.
You just need guidance on which way we wanna go as of the day, and then you'll take your rest of it.
Yes, sir.
I guess the best thing to do is, if board wants, as we tell him to proceed as he recommended to us, and get the proper labor workforce.
And then as far as the school division, it, leave that in categories.
Leave that in categories. Leave that in categories.
Okay.
Isn't that what the board wants to do?
Yep. Um.
To be paid how often? I agree.
How y'all want.
I say quarterly.
All right, quarterly appropriation.
And I need that information too, so I'll, I'll prepare as such.
What's a report?
Yes.
We, we should get monthly reports from, uh, Dr. Lesner or staff should be able to give us monthly reports. Would that be too much trouble to ask? Would it be too much trouble to ask for monthly reports coming in from you?
Quarter.
And then a quarterly report? After everything has been reconciled, a quarterly report then before you get your next draw? All right, okay, because we want to try to stay in, stay on track. And know if you overspent, then we're going to have, then you're going to have to try to make some adjustments. Because we want you to try to spend within your budget and have money left over at the end of the year.
Not too much time.
Ma'am? All right. All right, what else you need, Mr. Tadlock?
That's, that's all I need. I'll start preparing the.
When you be, when are you looking to get that approved?
Um, but I know Mr. Williams has a conflict and will not be back in town till Wednesday.
I can be here on the 25th.
25th.
Which is Wednesday, yes.
Um, so I, y'all want to do it the Wednesday afternoon?
That's 24th. I can do it either the 24th or the 25th, whatever y'all want to do.
25th suits me better if it doesn't offend anyone.
20, it's 25th better?
Yes, sir.
Early in the day or late in the day?
Let's say one.
Let me, let me check.
That going to interfere with?
Give me, give me one second.
I know if we're out here working, it's going to interfere. Brian's going to interfere if you're in it. Could we, could we just do it? 4:35? That gives everybody a chance to do a day's work or at least close to a day's work. All right, which y'all want, 4:30 or 5? 5?
5.
All right.
Got 24, right?
25th.
25th.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, 25th, 5:00 PM. We will finalize the budget. Right? Now, that's all done on that, we can move on to the next item. Tedlock, you take your time, but whenever you're ready.
All right, uh, next item. No, you're fine. Next item we have is, are the opioid abatement settlement funds. Uh, supplemental appropriations, so these are monies that we have received in the amount of $1,682.88. And that's to go to budget code 47-5102-3200.
All right, board, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to second to approve, any other? Any other questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Motion passes, Mr. Tedlock.
All right, next item we have are the, we have received some of the four-for-life funds. Um, have the amount of $4,628.55 and it goes to budget code 10-3203-5605.
Pleasure to approve. Got a motion to approve, do I have to second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? All right.
All right, and, uh, just have one correction regarding the vehicle surplus. Uh, in the letter that we had received, uh, for the Colorado, uh, that we were surplusing. Um, there was a number that was left off in the letter that was provided to us. Um, so the VIN number should be 5728, uh, for the Santerio District Colorado uh, vehicle. So if I could have the board amend the motion from June 12th to correct the VIN number, uh, for the surplus to 5728.
So move.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to amend that. This is just getting that last number corrected, is all it is.
That's correct. We just want it as, uh, for a correct reference.
Make everything correct, all right. So we have a motion to amend it, a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All against? All right. Tedlock, you have anything else?
Um, did you want to talk about board docs?
Yes, please.
Um, we had sent some additional information to, or questions to board docs, but, um, Morgan did find in some of the documentation that, uh, they, they would convert the current um, information to the new system. So if that's something that the board would like to do as of right now, uh, we can just go with the, the base package. And until we hear back from the, uh, diligent community, uh, as far as the upgraded package.
But we, we really don't have any choice on this. We don't, because that current program is being, that's, that'll be obsolete, so we won't have anything.
We won't.
Only one choice. The only choice we got is to go to this or upgrade and everybody else is cutting, we need to cut too.
Yep. All right, so what's your pleasure, the board?
Make a motion that we approve it.
All right, we got a motion to approve, got a second?
Second.
All right, got any other discussion?
And just for clarification, approve the base.
Basic, basic products, what I made a motion on.
That's all right, on second.
On second, yes.
All right. Any other discussion now? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right. Anything else, Mr. Tedlock?
Uh, last item I have is, uh, closed meeting.
All right, whenever you're ready to convene to give us the, uh, language for the closed meeting.
All right, I need a motion that the North Thomin County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Section 2.23711A1 for the discussion consideration of personnel matters. I invite you to attend the closed meeting as necessary of the county administrator, assistant county administrator. And Mary Dodson is there deemed necessary and their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia FOIA Section 2.23712F.
All right, gentlemen, can I have a motion? To convene in a closed meeting?
So move.
Got a motion to second, any other discussion on that? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are now in closed meeting.
Five minute, five minute break. Yeah, five minute break.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Five minute recess. Sure five is going to be enough? Just won't make a 10 because it'll take, it'll take you that long walk down there. Unless you're going to do laps.
Need a motion that the North Thomin Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by roll call vote that only public business management lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and as were identified in the motion, convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered during the closed meeting.
Got a motion, gentlemen?
Motion made.
Got a second?
Second.
All right, got a motion, um, roll call vote. Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Brand?
Aye.
Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Hany, aye. All right, we're now back in open meeting. Any action you need taken, except for carryover.
Just carryover to next Wednesday.
So motion to carryover to 25 at 5:00 PM. Got a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.